Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. It's crowded and it's probably going to get hot, so everybody kind of be patient, patient as we can on this. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. Okay, to start off tonight's meeting, we actually have two items, two special presentations that are on our agenda. The first one, we're going to move until August 3rd. Our Spring VIP Award recipient couldn't make it tonight, so she's going to come. We don't have to do any motion on that, okay? But I do, we do have the recipient of a city proclamation here tonight, so if you could step up to the podium, Eric Woods. I'm going to read this proclamation for Eric. Clayton is proud to recognize resident Eric Woods, who was awarded the Miami University President's Distinguished Service Award in recognition of his time at Miami volunteering and working in health-related areas. Eric served as the Vice President of Community Engagement and the Global Health Education Chair for MedLife of Miami, where he led with enthusiasm and creativity, attending every clinic and creating and executing a volunteer training program, in addition to recruiting and scheduling all front desk volunteers. Eric was instrumental in planning fundraising activities, coordinating community activities, and advocating for future partnerships between the university and the clinic. As a full-time student and employee at Dayton Children's Hospital, Eric's ability to make decisions and share resources was outstanding. His nominator commented that Eric is "one of the best volunteers I've had the honor of working with." Eric also, as a private tutor, volunteered at McCullough Hyde Memorial Hospital and the Oxford Free Clinic, and served in leadership roles within his fraternity. I, Mike Stevens, the mayor of the City of Clayton, do hereby recognize and congratulate Eric Woods for his outstanding accomplishment and wish him the best in all future endeavors. Thank you. Good job. Appreciate you. Proud of you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Of course, you're welcome to stay, but...
(laughter)
Hey, thanks, thanks for coming in. Thanks, Bill. Okay, we have the clerk's report.
You have the council meeting minutes of June 15th, 2023.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And we did make a change to our agenda this time around. It was, it's due to a clause, I guess, in our charter that we can, we can move the visitors' comments up on the second reading. We are going to have the second reading tonight of the Salem Springs ordinance, so we've moved the visitors' comments up to now versus at the end. Okay, so I need to grab that. Just a couple of things. I'm just going to read them off as I have them here. I don't know what page was, was first or second. I'm just going to start with the top one I've got here. You don't have to speak. If you want to, you step up to the podium and state your name and your address, and that'll be for the record. And if you don't want to, that's fine too, just say no or say nothing. I want to remind everyone that this is not what you call the public hearing meeting. It is a public hearing because we're here, but it's not the public hearing meeting. So this will be comments only, so don't, you know, it's not the time to go back and forth with council questions and all that. I do have just one thing before we get started. Resident dropped off this short little note here. He couldn't stay for the meeting, but he wanted this read in to the, into the record, so I told, I told him that I would do that. All the other emails that any of the council members have received, myself or the, or the staff, is, we have in this folder, and they have already been entered into the record, so I'm not going to read, read all those. Okay. Meeting Thursday, July 20th, 2023. Due to being unable to, to tonight's meeting, I request this letter be read into the meeting record. Our names are Gregory and Crystal Hinker. We live at 9594 Fox Road, Clayton, Ohio 45315. We are voting against the rezoning and the plan to build houses on 43 acres near Haber Road and Phillipsburg Union Road. The proposed plan violated the current zoning and will further degrade the road traffic and general conditions with the agricultural appeal in the north. We are requesting the City of Clayton withdraw from the rezoning and the building of a house, housing plat. The current plan is one more example of the city not acting in the best interest of the North Clayton area. Thank you for consideration, for considering this request. And again, that was from Mr. and Mrs. Hinker out on Fox Road, so that's read into the record. Himker, I'm sorry. His writing's not as bad as mine, but it's... So, Mr. and Mrs. Himker. Okay, the first, the first person up, John Wallace. Oh, yeah, one, one more thing, folks. We do have a five-minute time limit on there, and if you look right over there by the podium, we have a little timer there, so just kind of respect that. You know, if you go to 5:01, you know, no one's going to give you the hook, but let's try to keep it, you know, within the, within the five minutes. Say it again? No, not for this. Thank you, though. John Wallace, do you want to speak? Okay, okay, thank you. Lori King. Dan, or Deon Rose Rossi. Sound right? Deon on Dominican. Heather on Sterling Maple. Beth Wyatt. Mr. and Mrs. DeFreeze. I'm going to say this wrong. Gloria Von Fonstuck? Was I close? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Gloria Von Fonestock, 10831 Putnam. Okay, so I was going around last night, and I went to a lot of houses all up and down Sweet Potato and found some interesting things, some interesting history. People lived there. One was 40 years, one was 47 years. So I learned a lot about what's going on in this area, but I also learned that there, online, there is a thing called the 2018 Clayton Plan. And if you're not familiar with that, look it up. Interesting, page 58 will tell you all the different areas that, I meant to have it with me to show you, but I forgot it. Of all the different things that have been proposed, five years ago, I guess you guys, for lack of nothing, no plan. You probably was looking forward, so I don't think any of that's written in stone. Is that correct? That's just the proposed plan? Okay, but they're, they're looking at doing a lot more expansion than just the Haber Road. So this isn't just this one thing that we're doing tonight for the Haber. It's much more, it's our entire community. So we have to be looking ahead, so don't, don't think that this, this is over and done with right now. You've got to look at your neighbors, you've got to get to know your neighbors, you've got to get to find out who's got extra strengths and expertise, who has knowledge. I, I met some people that are very knowledgeable, and I see one of them is here tonight, and I'm very grateful for that. And so anyway, so I learned a lot about that just by talking to the neighbors, so I encourage all of you to do that and take it forward. And look at page 58 and see what's planned for that, because you, I think you do that, what, every five years? About? Rewrite that? Yeah, they update it. So it, it impacts everybody. There's some, a lot of stuff that is planned to, more than just this one subdivision, so you need to look at that. One of the things that somebody brought up, and I heard it twice, was they, there was a proposal to do a solar field in the fields behind, north of Sweet Potato, between Diamond Mill and Haber. So I don't know, I, I don't know if anybody else has heard about that, but that's definitely something we all want to talk about and want to keep our ears and eyes open. Is that anything that's come up here before? Okay, well, that, the rumor mill is out there on that, so everybody keep your ears up on that. The last thing I'll say is, I'm learning about politics, I'm about a month into this, and so I'm starting to get to know who all you guys are, because you're our representatives, and thank you very much for answering. You represent us. We choose you to represent us because we can't be everything, we can't be knowledgeable. You're, you're the ones with the expertise, and we really rely on that. And I know that Clayton, I mean, I went to an area of Clayton that's like 10 houses that's by Union at the end of Sweet Potato. Why that's there, I have no idea. It's totally disconnected from the rest of Clayton, but somebody made that decision, so it really doesn't matter. But they seem they're away from where we're at, but somebody has to represent the people in the communities, and somebody, you represent, Mr. Lieberman, us in the rural area. And politics aside, our idea aside, you've got to do what your constituents want, the people you represent want. And if you're, people... (applause) So, if, you know, you, you may have all this other information, but if you've not told us the other facts and the other things going on, and for lack of us being here and being negligent to being involved in our community, if you just came up with a plan thinking that you did the best for us, we appreciate that, but now we're telling you, no, somebody didn't, didn't talk to us. Somebody didn't tell us what was going on, and we've, we've gotten involved now, and we're going to continue to be involved. So you're going to see a lot more of us in writing and in meetings and one-on-one, so, so, you know, and I respectfully submit, Mr. Lieberman, you represent us in the rural area, and regardless of what you want, you, what we want is pretty obvious. And we're asking you to protect us, protect our interests and what we want. So I think I speak, speak on everybody for that behalf. So please put your politics and your, your letters aside, you know, talk to the people and your constituents who are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Von Fonstuck? I'm sorry. I, I did that last time, I'm sorry.
So hi, my name is Anna Von Fonestock. I'm at 10831 Putnam. My mom just spoke, so just to tag on to that, from the next generation moving into this area, the idea of a rural community is one that stays rural. I know I speak on behalf of myself, for instance, and others who are, they want to be in the area, but if the cities are moving in on top of us, it's not what we're interested in, it's not what we can afford, and it's not legitimate or reasonable, in my opinion. So when, when I come to these meetings, I'm exhausted. I work two jobs just to afford my, my student debt bills, so I'm, I'm living here with my parents by their graces, and I want it to be a community that I can afford to be in. And with the idea of specifically lots of little subdivisions of not very long-term housing establishments, if a house is built with the idea in 10 years, it needs to be completely rebuilt. It's not a long-term investment, especially for somebody in my perspective and my generation wants to move out of their parents' house, like no business. And I know some of you may know me as the, the sus girl, but in reality, I just, I want to speak on behalf of those who use different terminologies. And I think in regard to the way things are going right now with the lack of transparency, it's a big oof on at least the, your council part. We want the transparency. There's technology available to make everything super straightforward. We don't need to use big jargon words, oh, it's great for you. Whoa, 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 talk to me, I'll tell you what's great for me. Don't, don't assume and make those accusations of what, what you deem to be appropriate when you haven't even knocked on our door. I don't know you personally. I live there. I work two jobs. I'm very, very busy, so taking time out of my work schedule to come here because it's important to me is, is where I think my time is better spent to make sure that I can speak on behalf of the next millennial generation moving into the community, or hoping to move into the community. So little houses is not what keeps this city rural. Yes, it can bring lots of people in, but it's not, it's not what it's for. It, I want to live out where I can have livestock, where I can grow a garden, where if I want to talk to my neighbor, I gotta, I gotta need the chest to walk it to their door. I don't want to, like, watch the movie they're watching through their window. That's not, that's not building a community, that's building people who are Big Brother establishment, looking through your window, what are you up to? What are you doing? Who are you, who are you talking to? Why are they coming and going? Why are there so many cars? Like, that's not, that's not building a community, and we're all here to support one another in what we believe to be the Clayton community, which is a rural community. So that's all I really have to say. I just felt the need to have to say something, so, thank you.
Thanks, Anna. I will not make that mistake again on your name. I promise. Leah Bustos? Maurice Bustos? Brittany Smith? Carrie Smith? Ron Nicely?
Ron Nicely live at 11853 Oldham Hill Road. You have to forgive me, I, my voice gets shaky when I speak in front of people, I'm not good at this, but I do feel like I need to comment. What you, the actions you take reflect into the future for significant amounts. I recall when, a related but unrelated topic, when the income taxes put into effect, we were told not to worry, this is always going to be this way, and if you live here, you're not going to be paying the full tax rate. Well, politicians change what, what happens. And I don't like the idea of you making decisions that reflect on fut, past decisions that were made. People believed those rulings made then. Now we're not going to have that to stand on. So I think you need to consider how what you're doing reflects on all politicians.
Thank you, sir. Scott Anderson?
Scott Anderson, 10581 Haber Road. Council members, I just wanted to say I appreciate the challenge that you have in the work that you do for the City of Clayton. It's hard, and I know that. I appreciate the considerations that you put into the decisions that you make. I hope, as you consider this now for the second time, that you take into account the large number of people who continue to come, hearing after hearing, because the constituents are trying to make a point to you, that this matters to us. And I realize, as Mr. Lieberman said last time, that you are looking at the bigger picture. We try to look at the bigger picture as well, but we also must realize that we live in our world, and this is affecting our world. And so I would appreciate your careful consideration and to take into account what it is that your constituents are trying to tell you right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kyle Anderson? Steve Hensley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Steve Hensley, 10895 Haber Road. And for those of you who have voted against the proposal for Salem Springs, I, I thank you. For those of you who have voted in favor, I respectfully ask that you please reconsider. As you make your decision, I understand you have many competing factors that you need to weigh, and I understand there may be an interest in seeing this proposal as an opportunity to garner more bottom line for the city, which is an important consideration, I acknowledge. I'm not against development. I understand the developer has an interest, and I don't fault them for proposing this. I understand the seller has needs and an interest in selling, and I don't fault the seller for wanting to sell the land. However, as we look to you, the city council, I would ask that you please consider the, the principle of the matter. Principle always has to rise above bottom line. We have a covenant. We rely on the city council to enforce that covenant on behalf of the community, to keep that covenant with the community, and the covenant manifests itself in zoning, in a city charter, in having a plan, not only a plan Clayton, but a plan that all of the neighbors here can plan their lives around. So I ask that you please elevate principle over the bottom line, trust that the funds, the opportunities will come at the right time, but moving from the current zoning and drastically changing it to what's being proposed, in my view, would be a violation of principle and a violation of covenant, and good leadership must always govern with principle. So again, I respectfully ask you to please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joanne McGlal? Thank you. Randy on Barnes Road? Kathleen Smith? Mark Alsabrooks?
Mark Alsabrooks, 220 Irongate Drive in Union. I know we have no, pretty much say in a lot of this, except that it's going to be at the back of our house. And just to tell you a little story, leaving the other day to go to work, I work at Caterpillar, and I was driving through our neighborhood, and our neighborhood's been there for a while. We recently got a bunch of houses that gotten rented out, and I remember when we first moved in, how pristine that area was, how nice yards were kept, how cut, very nice, flowing, I mean, all that stuff. I was driving to go to work, and I saw just trash on the side of the roads in our plat. Signs knocked down. They have this little cross guy, he's neon colored. It's for, slow down for kids, pretty much. It was knocked over on the side. Gatorade bottles everywhere, and I just foresee the same thing happening if you let this plat go through. I mean, rentals are fine, but they, they have no skin in the game in rentals. They're there just because they're there, that's what they can find. And there's no knock on anybody, except that they don't take care of it like your homeowner takes care of their stuff. Okay? And I would echo what the other gentleman said about principle, and, and on top of that, integrity. Integrity that long, I know it was a long time ago, but it was agreed upon that anything north of 40 wouldn't be touched. And I just respectfully ask you to keep that promise and, and let the folks in that area stay rural, and like everyone has said, you guys work for us. Well, for the people of the Clayton, not so much for me, but we still have a driving interest in all this, though. So I respectfully ask you to not let this go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nicole Alsabrooks?
Nicole Alsabrooks, 220 Irongate Drive. I swear, Mark probably looked at my notes because I was typing some notes, and we're in sync there. As I spoke last time, this very much affects not just the Clayton residents. This is also going to affect the City of Union with especially Irongate. We have had so many water issues that have, have been created after new, newer parts of the development were, were started, that flow over into your area, and I think that the cities need to come together and get that all corrected before we even take a look at anything else, because this is just going to be a domino effect of issues going forward. What I wrote down was that agreement that so many people worked for or fought against back when it was promised that it would not be developed north of 40. So there's a little technicality in there, so you're doing technicality versus integrity. So the technicality of the legalities of whatever, however the loophole was that you found that you couldn't process this, and it's not a legal document, or whatever was said the last time, I'm sure you might get to that, you know, there's an integrity issue here. If you promised your, your residents that it was not going to be developed, and now it's all being looked at. What you do in Clayton affects the Northmont area. We, as Northmont, do not want to become a Huber Heights. We want it to be the tight-knit family that we've all become because of, you know, talking through this and fighting this. We want that tight-knit area that we, what we have currently within the Northmont area. You guys are one of the largest areas in Northmont, so you need to lead with the integrity so that the other cities do the same thing. There's three brand-new homes that were built on our street in Irongate, three brand-new homes. They were built by Century Homes, only one of those sold. Do we really think that 500 feet over, the houses are going to sell like that? And like, like Mark talked about, the, the renters, again, everybody has to have a place to live, but there's definitely not the investment when you don't own it. This is also going to affect our home values and our hard-earned money, the hard work that we do every single day and raised our children in this community. This is going to affect our home values, which affects...
And I didn't know anything about anything. I'm glad I picked here. And then, secondly, was the nature of the community, that it was more agrarian and rural, and that we had a combination of the small town feel as well as the rural area. And having lived in Randolph Township, I went through those years when we had the merger with the village of Clayton. And I got some beatings for that, but I'm still here. So, I really want to speak that we want to preserve what we've already got here with the rural option for people that want to come to this community and raise families, because that's what we did. And we're very happy that we did. I think the other thing is, you know, as several of the other people have said, you know, you guys represent us. And, you know, I would take that very seriously, because I think there's a sense in America that the elected officials, regardless of party, don't represent the people that put them there. And, you know, we want you guys in your position, but we also want you representing the will of the people here. And we've got to be transparent about it. And I sense, I don't live in that area per se, so I don't really know what all's gone on there, but I sense there's been a lack of transparency. And who wins in this arrangement? Is it, you know, is it just the developers, or are there going to be other people that benefit financially from this arrangement? And I think that my sense is, there's probably going to be people that benefit from this financially. And they should, the ones that are putting the money up and getting things going. But I think as a leadership group, you guys have done a great job of running our city. You were doing a great job of finding opportunities for us to make revenue. But by the same token, we don't want the way we get revenue is at the expense of the people here, or at the benefit of people that are elected to represent us. So I thank you for your consideration. I'd like to encourage the people that voted yes to consider going the other direction and voting no. But I do appreciate the fact that you've got a tough job and you're trying to support our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Roberts? Amy Roberts? Bill Homan? Jack Sells? Tina Sells? Mr. Poleable?
My name is Dan Poleable. I live at 11141 Putnam Road. And I've been there the last forty-five years. That forty-five years has been overall a very good experience. I have to say, it was better when it was Randolph Township, simply because there was less government. If you talk to most people... I think the nature of any government that grows is that it becomes less functional, less personal. And I think that's what we're seeing here. I think you're seeing a situation where, in your heart, you know what's right. I used to tell my daughter, I said, you know, there's three ways to make a decision. You can look around at people that are a little older than you, that have been at that point in life, and see what they did, what their decision was, how did it turn out? You can also say, well, I think this other decision here will give me a short-term gain, and I might, you know, I might lose some friends, might make my parents angry, but that's what I'm going to do. I think you're seeing something like this right here. You guys have an opportunity to make the right decision. You know what that is. This gentleman's sitting beside me here, he's got a job to do. I have no problem with him. I mean, he's got to build homes and make a living. They don't need to be here. I reached out with an email to the four members that voted for this resolution. I did get an answer. And the one question I asked that was the most important, I said, "Last and most important, why are you considering changing current zoning laws to allow this development?" And I'm aware of the promise, or whether it's a piece of law or what it is, but there was a promise, in some format, to stop development north of forty. I think everybody, even on this council, would agree to that. Is that right? And so I said, you know, "Why are you doing it?" The person who answered, I'll remain anonymous, but he's sitting there at the table, "The person who owns this land wants to sell it." He says, "Clayton does not own it. It is not unusual, in situations like this, for there to be a change of zoning for a particular property." Well, if that's the standard, everybody here owns a piece of property that could probably benefit by a zoning change at some point when they want to sell it. Well, maybe this lady just needs to sell her property at the going price for farmland. If she just wants too much money for it... So, again, I go back to what I said initially. There's several ways to make a decision. You can just do it on statistics and data. But, like I say, if you look around, look at other communities that have been in situations like this, look at the decisions they've made. How did it work out long-term? So I'd ask you to ask yourself that question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Floyd Fisher? Mr. Fisher? Kristy Cox? Jeff Eubanks?
Jeff Eubanks at 4590 Phillipsburg Union Road. I wasn't going to speak, but I just feel glad to share this little bit of information and talk to our developer here for a moment. I did a little research today and found out that Arbor Homes was bought by Clayton Group Properties out of Tennessee in 2018, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Berkshire Hathaway. Two billion dollars or more revenue outfit, not to mention all the other things that Berkshire owns. So, I understand Arbor Homes is in business to make money. I understand you need to sell and move on with things in your family. But it's affecting a lot of people that are against this. I think it's something that Warren Buffett and Charlie Munger would look at a different way to work with the community than the bottom line. I think the investment that Arbor has in this could look at a better way to work with the residents, and then the city with all the other previously-zoned residential properties. The pockets are deep enough for you guys to find someone that would work with. Maybe it's going to take a little more time than you intend, but there's enough money there for Arbor Homes, the Clayton Group, and Mr. Buffett to find a better way. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pam Gruze? David Gruze? Lori Hartman?
Lori Hartman, 7293 Phillipsburg Union Road. This is a very unique situation because of how the city of Clayton became. Because it was a township and a village that came together and joined together. And then it was still only a village for a year before it became a city. Correct? As I was looking at the history, that was, it was a village of Clayton before it was city. It wasn't until after the election, after it joined, that they were actually recognized as a city. Again, I understand all of your, what you're going through. Again, in the '30s, when Orville and Dorothy bought that farm, there were eight houses there, three on Haber. Three on Haber. The others weren't built until the '70s. And in the '70s, when the farmer who lived on the southeast corner of Haber and Phillipsburg Union sold off all those five-acre lots to build on, Orville didn't say anything to the public, but boy, did he say stuff to the family. And then in the '80s, and again, this is the '80s, when he first saw the development plans for all four farms there in that southeast corner, and he said, "Oh, that's never going to happen. My neighbors are never going to sell." That's where Iron Gate is now. After Orville died in 1993, Dorothy moved to Englewood in 1994 because she didn't want to live out there by herself in a farmhouse. Well, the farmhouse was rented out for a little while, and then we had to deal with renters. And we had people, when, we had to kick renters out. We had to deal with people breaking into the house, people destroying the property over and over again. And that was Randolph Township at that time, and, "Well, we don't have the policing to watch out for your property. We can't do anything about that. Just put signs up." And as the signs and fences and everything else were cut repeatedly, and we had hundreds and hundreds of dollars back then in replacing fences to try and control it, we sold off part of the buildings because they were dropping the insurance on us, because there was no one living there. So we couldn't have insurance. But we had people breaking into the place, so if they got hurt, we had to be able to protect ourselves, or at least protect the trust that that property is in. Well, when they started to have some discussion about whether Clayton and Randolph Township were going to actually join, and, you know, would that actually pass, Dorothy said, "That is never going to pass. The people out here are never going to let that happen." So when the city of Union came to her and said, "Hey, the guys, the neighboring farms decided they were going to merge in with us," she was like, "Oh, no, thank you. That's never going to pass." Well, that fall, it passed. Then Dorothy got sick, and then Dorothy passed away. So then, all of the trust has been left on my father-in-law. My father-in-law's in his mid-80s. He's at the, you know, I hate to say it, he's towards the end of his life. This trust cannot be broken. We have tried to get it out. We cannot do it unless that property is sold at the market rate, or at the valued rate. Because of where it sits, it was valued as development property. That's why the $600,000 price. It's not that we're trying to get rich off of it. There have, I've seen so many things online, insinuating that members of council are being, getting kickbacks and everything else. And I just, I'm shocked. One of the things I went and did was looked at what is currently allowable there as the agricultural, as farming district. Commercial animal sales and feedlots. Concentrated animal feeding facilities. And actually, you can put twenty poultry houses with composting facilities on that forty-three acres. Or eighteen hog houses with underground tanks to hold manure. You can do outdoor processing, composting, and under conditional uses for that, you can have a power generation facility or a landfill. At the last meeting, I heard several people say, "Well, why don't they just zone it the way it is across the street?" Zoning across the street is RSD. RSD has a minimum lot area of .15 acres. That is six houses per acre. Six houses per acre. Now, a developer could come in and say, "Okay, let's put some roads in here," so they'll have to take some of the acreage away to put roads in there. They wouldn't have to do studies, they wouldn't have to do anything else. That's what they could do. But the developer, the company that went to the realtor to, because they saw that the property was available, came to the city and said, you know, "We want it to be PPD, a planned development." What does a planned development do? Planned development ties their hands in a lot of ways. They're not, they would not be able to put more than 125 houses there. Could it be less? Absolutely. But it could never be more. That's what the agreement is. The agreement also includes that the developer has to complete traffic and water studies. Traffic studies, in the agreement, it also says that the developer is going to be responsible for taking care of the roads if they need to be increased in size. Is that correct? Is that what is in the agreement? Yes. And the water studies? Everyone's talking about the water issues. Do you realize that that development could take care of the water issues? Because it could force Clayton and Union to work together. Because the developer has to do a water study and has to figure out how to make the water flow correctly. Otherwise, they cannot build the first house. They cannot build the first house unless those are done. So, just, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rose Plummer? Joe Plummer?
Joe Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. Has the council ever done a water study on Old Mill Road? We have flooding. Whenever there's like two inches of rain, our creeks overrun. And I've addressed Randy about these issues, and you get no answers. So if this young lady says, "You guys will work with Union to resolve the issue," will you do that? That's all I have to say. I'm worried about the runoff. We have other people, the whole backyard gets flooded through, and it's just not the major, once-in-a-hundred-years rainfalls. I've got videos of three times in three years of it happening. So consider that when you vote on this stuff. Who's going to pay for the study and who's going to resolve the study or fix the problem? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sam Cox? Keith Gay? Gary Wallace?
Gary Wallace, 11998 Old Mill Road. I'd like to add a little historical perspective to the flooding problem on Pig Eye Creek. I've been there forty-seven years on Old Mill Road. Am I the old man of the road? Anybody been there longer? But I, okay. When I first moved in, for the first three, four years, we had no water problems. We had no high water. It was that uncommon. Every three or four years, we'd have a high-water situation. When they started putting in Iron Gate, it got a little worse as they built Iron Gate because of the runoff. And I've had trash situations, I've lost fish. You have to look at the videos to see just how serious the problem is when that water gets up there. I've spent hundreds treatment, because I don't know what's coming down that creek. I've got trash, I've got who knows what, there grows a different algae almost every year, just from the runoff. I don't know where it comes from, other than up creek, everything comes up creek. And, you know, every square foot of asphalt, every square foot of concrete, every square foot of roofing causes more runoff. That water can't soak into the ground. The streets, the driveways increased, as seen in Iron Gate, as it got bigger, my problem got bigger. And my neighbor's problem got bigger. The Pig Eye drainage cannot sustain more runoff. It just can't. Unless you've got a way to run that runoff directly to the stillwater, not through the Pig Eye, it can't happen. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Doug Norton?
Doug Norton, 119 Iron Gate Drive in Union. When I moved to Union, I was warned about the water problem. "Don't get a basement," they said. So I'm on a flat, I got a slab. I didn't want to mess with that. I had that problem here in Clayton, unfortunately. But I kind of look at this from a common sense point of view. Haber's not built for that kind of traffic. Now, the developer could, you know, build a road, that's fine, but then you've got problems on each end of Haber. You've got a funnel going there. Let's say the contractor pays for all that, that's great. But guess who gets to fund and maintain it? Clayton. That just added to your bottom-line budget for maintenance. Same with fire, EMS, you've got to take care of that. That's all part of the government. I get that. The other common sense thing is, let's say this goes through, and you build 125 houses, for example, in the low end. Those constituents, when they have water problems, it's not the council's problem, it's theirs. And from my experience, insurers doesn't pay for flooded basements. They do. So you won't be doing your constituents any favors if they have water problems in that development. But I guess, that's my biggest question, it's for you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know you personally. I'm going to assume you're an honorable man, because that's my assumption for everybody, and I know you're a realtor. And my understanding is that you recuse yourself from sales in that area. But that's easy to say. In my job, I have to take ethics training every year, and one of the key features that tells us is, avoid any decision that appears that it could be inappropriate or have a conflict of interest. I don't, and we're all human, we're all human. You know, when you're out of office, or even, you know, five years down the road, who's to say? You could, somebody could call you and say, "Hey, I want to sell my house." No one would, no one would give you a hard time saying, "Yeah, I'll take that job," because it's, you're a working man, that's what you do. But I think for your reputation, unfortunately, the society the way it is, the impression will be, regardless of what you say, the assumption will be that you're going to make some money off that deal someday or another day. Not saying that you will, but that's going to be the assumption, that's just human nature. We're suspicious by nature. And I said, I don't, like I said, I don't know you, but my assumption is you won't, but that won't keep people from thinking that you will. And that's kind of a hit on you. So I would urge you, in particular, I know, I don't want everybody else to be a realtor here, but I know you are, in particular, I would urge you to either stay or vote against it, just so your reputation is intact. That's all. And I don't have any doubt about your honor or your honesty, but you know how people are. So that would be my urge to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dana York?
Hi, my name is Dana York. I live at 10635 Haber Road. I just wanted to address the comment I made last meeting about running for council. After heavy consideration, and then also getting together with my community here, I've decided not to run this time. We have selected someone else who I feel would be more fitting at this time. So, just wanted to put that on record. I wanted to say a few things. There will be two communities, or there will be two locations in the city of Clayton where homeowners will be looking out their front door, or front windows, walking out their front door, and looking at the back of others' homes. Those two locations will be the new development, if it ever goes in, at the corner of Haber and National. And then also, the development that's going to be voted on here. Those are the only two locations in the city of Clayton where residents have to look at the back of another resident's home. You know, zoning laws are put into effect not only to, you know, help the seller, which I have total respect for you, but, you know, they're also put in place to protect the residents in the area. That's why we're all here today. If you could just rezone something to whatever you want it to be, why would we be here today? The reason we go through these things is to check, does this fit? Does this make sense? I've actually had two members of council who voted for this say, "I don't want that there." But the reasoning we voted is because it makes the best sense for the city of Clayton. Well, I thought of this, and I was trying to think of an analogy, and when I walked up to the government center here today, I thought of it. So I parked across the street at the Board of Education, just to give people here more space to park. And as I'm walking up, you know, I'm thinking, "Man, if this parking lot was full, I could just pull my car right up here in the grass and park." You know, there's no parking sign, just pull up right there and park. So I'd be the city of Union. Yeah, it's a pretty dumb thing to do, right? Park right there. Now, the next city, or the next person to come drives by, "Oh, hey, there's a car right there, I can park." Not think logically, "Hey, this is, you know, a well-landscaped area right here, I probably shouldn't do that." But I have a decision. Do I park there, or do I go find another spot? That's what we have here. Iron Gate, just because Union built there, doesn't mean that that was the right thing to do. So saying that it's okay to build here because there's another development right next door, you don't have to follow someone else's mistake just because. Okay? So, this is for, I could build thirty-three of these homes on my property. What stops me from contacting Ryan Holmes and saying, "Hey, I want to sell my lot." You can build a road right down the side of the Christmas tree farm, and you could build thirty-three lots right down there. What prevents me from doing that? Because the city needs it, right? The city needs that revenue, that tax revenue. Thirty-three lots on my property that I'm going to be looking out at. I'll be looking at probably the back of twenty-five homes out my front door when I walk out. Montgomery County Soil and Water, we have called them many times. A lot of us don't get replies back. Some of us do, some of us get the Kettering Office, some of us get the Brookville Office, we get different answers. And pretty much what they're saying to us is that they can only enforce the EPA minimum within Clayton, because Clayton contracts out all of those approvals. The water assessment, the traffic assessment is all contracted out. So who are we going to get? Are we going to look at a quarter-mile radius around this development and not just look right on top of this development and see where this water's going? Are we going to look down Old Mill? Are we going to look all the way to Montgomery County line and see how it's affecting residents everywhere? I hope we urge for that. I hope we push for that and ask for that, if this developer, if this passes. if this passes. I also know for a fact that Arbor Homes was provided a list of the residents in the area, in the exact area, I'll be, I'll be short. They were provided a list of the residents, and they said that they could not put a meeting together. No one was contacted, not a single person on that list was contacted. They were given a list of residents by Seth Dorman. And I just want to say to everyone here, thank you for coming out. This experience has brought me close to a lot of you guys, and you guys feel like family. I feel like I have a huge family now. Even if this goes through, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alicia York, 10635 Haber Road. I wrote it down this time, so I stay on track. I want to first address Ms. Hartman. You had this story about Orville and Dorothy hating these developments going in, right? And now they're passed away, and I, I'm not trying to be mean, but do you think they'd be excited that you're putting a development on the land that they were so upset about all the developments going in around it? That hurts, I don't understand that. And now, you're telling us all the development next to it has given you so many problems, and now you're putting development close to us, and we'll have to deal with the same things you do. We, we caused trouble? How? I would love to talk to you about that after, because not one of us on Haber has done anything to your property. Actually, I called the police department.
Alicia.
No, I, this is for, this is for fire and rescue. I called the police department because there was someone on your property blowing off fireworks, and I, and I actually told them, I was like, I know the Hartmans' is private property, they don't want that. And I had to call like three different places because nobody would come help me. So I'm just going to put that out there, it's not fixed, I know it's still an ongoing thing. I do believe, if you would have parceled it off and spent the extra money, because I talked to you at the end of the last meeting, spent the extra money to get it parceled, you probably might have made more money, and it would have sold. So, council, you guys said that within two years, we're going to go bankrupt. How is this one development going to help? It will not be done in two years to help any of that, first of all. And what's the urgency for it to go in if it's not going to help? And it's not a place, and how, especially with this kind of pushback. If it passes tonight, which unfortunately I feel it's going to, I know it's going to come down to the studies in the future. I don't have much faith in that, their minimum study requirements, it's easy to get it to go through. So I don't have faith in that in general. And like my husband said, Montgomery County, even if you do call them, they only have to recommend the minimum. That's all they can do. Are these studies actually going to go beyond the actual development? Old Mill is the biggest issue, and obviously traffic. But Old Mill, every time a development goes in, it gets worse. So you have to think about that. It's not the study around right there, it goes farther. And I don't know if the developer's study will do that, and I don't know if you can make him do that, but it needs to be looked at. Now for the traffic. Haber is a problem. There will need to be a light at Haber and National, a light that the city still cannot get. My dad had a friend that passed away on Phillipsburg Union and Haber, years ago, before it was a four-way stop. The citizens complained and said it needed to be a four-way stop, and nothing happened until my dad's friend passed away. Do we need to have another death for you guys to realize how important this is? Not to mention, it will need to be widened. Have you sat on Haber and looked how many cars go pie? One of, sorry. Not only cars, but also tractors. One of those tractors is me sometimes. I drive from Fox Road to my house multiple times in the summer. I can't tell you how many times I've had people either tailgating me, or flying past me when a car is coming. It's not safe, and it's not wide enough for them to do that. Not to mention, all the people that decide to race from the tunnel of trees all the way to Phillipsburg Union going 90 miles an hour. And this is at all times of the day, especially 2:00 AM, which happens weekly. And we do know the car that does it, so if you need to know, I'll let you know. I also want to address the entrance and the exit that Arbor has. It's horribly placed. My neighbors Dana and Larry will have lights shining directly into their house as people leave and go, all day long, and all night long, and it goes directly into their living room where they're watching TV. So just think about that as yourselves, would you want that? I apologize. I do want to say, I'm in awe of the community coming together and trying to voice our opinion. I'm appalled at some of the council and the mayor not listening. We haven't said a word about the other developments that have been started, other than Redwood. And I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Coons, but that development was laughable. For anyone to think it was a great idea shocks me. We agree that we need to have growth, but we need to do it in a way with integrity and morals. Month-to-month housing across from a high school is not the right idea, and I'm glad that you guys did turn the Redwood down. I'll end by saying, thank you to all the council members that have reached out and agreed to meet with some of us. Everyone I talked to, you were very respectful and kind. I know the person we spoke to listened and understood what we were saying, and it was a very civil, fun conversation. We may not agree on much, but I appreciate the time and the effort that you took to speak with us. I know I upset very many people getting information, but as you have all said before, keep your emotions out of it. I did it to cover all my bases and to dig as deep as I could. If you were in my shoes, you would all do the same. And to the ones that chose, were to meet, and chose to not meet, especially my husband and I, I have respected you as a person. But maybe not agreed with any of your choices, and it hurt me deeply that you would not come to talk to me face-to-face. I've lost all respect, and I won't forget it. Thank you to Mr. Henning and Mr. Gorman, and Mrs. Kelly. We appreciate you supporting this community and being our voice, and thank you to all that have come tonight. I'm telling you right now, I live in one heck of a community, because you guys are awesome, and I've seen so many new faces, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Paulette Farmer, 11735 Old Mill Road. So I agree with Alicia, I fully expect this to be the same vote as it was the last time, but I'm not sure everybody on council understands or knows the history completely of the area, so at least you'll be aware, and you'll know going forward. My parents, back in 2005, I believe it was, some of you know the cell tower they wanted to put in, and mom and dad fought that cell tower. They wanted to put it about the middle of Reinhardt, so right in the middle. So after mother died, I found some letters that she made sure to point out to me, to take, and part of it was this, because it was so important. So, in reading that letter, I'm going to summarize a little bit of the letter and quote it a little bit, so I can minimize my time. It came to our attention, and this letter is from the Ohio Historic Preservation Office. It came to our attention in early 2006 that numerous properties within the area of potential effects for this project that are potentially eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic were not documented in the initial submission. They used photos from the Old Mill Road and the Reinhardt in the subdivision, and that's what they submitted, when the cell tower did it. So honesty is not, you know, necessarily 100%. FCC requires Singular, which is now AT&amp;T, to retain a consultant, to apply the National Register criteria for evaluation for all properties over 50 years old through the area of potential effects, the APE, for the project. So, what I found in her letter had the reporting, and the finding, and conclusions. No property surveyed met the criteria to be individually eligible due to unsympathetic alterations over the years. The next part I'm quoting verbatim. However, collectively, the properties retain sufficient integrity to continue to convey their association with broad patterns of history that include early settlement patterns and early agricultural and industrial practices. Collectively, the log cabins, farmhouse, and associated buildings, and mill-related resources continue to relate to the early history of Randolph Township despite their various alterations. Therefore, we concur with Ms. Wellings' assessment that the APE is within a historic district that is eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places under Criterion A. Potential boundaries for this district are identified by Ms. Wellings', which include Baker Road to the north, State Route 48 to the east, Phillipsburg Union Road to the south, and Putnam Road to the west, were limited by the scope of the survey and the area of potential effects for this project. Additional research will be needed to identify boundaries to the district that are not influenced by the scope of this project. There's a section that I really want to read out of the original letter. The ruling was that a cell tower would be destructive to the rural setting and viewshed that is still largely intact, due in large part to the city of Clayton's designation of the area as a rural conservation district. This designation is evidence of the city's commitment to maintain the historic rural character of the area. On a related note, it is our understanding that Randolph Township merged with the city of Clayton in 1998 in an effort to preserve the rural character in the face of expanding development from the south. In summary, the setting and feeling of the historic district are largely defined by a lack of modern improvements, improvements in quotes, on the landscape. This allows the area to retain the rural character that is the most important characteristic of the historic district. So, Mr. Lieberman, you asked, what impact would this have? Because Iron Gate's already there. Well, if you notice, they said they included Baker Road to the one side, my parents' property is right in the middle. It didn't go where Iron Gate was, even though there was a very important historic home there, it stopped right there. They stated that we had the potential to not only have a rural historic district, we can expand the boundaries. It was limited by the study. So if we want to pick it up and finish this mission, our city could potentially have a rural historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places, becoming only the second of its kind in the state of Ohio, with great potential to expand the boundaries currently identified if we so wish. We would also be the only city in the entire state, as the other one is a township. I understand council decision by making, weighing the cost versus revenue or potential revenue for the city. The financial aspect is usually the first thing I look at when I need to make decisions for my own home, so I do understand, as a city, where you are coming from. However, we always say the most important things in life are the ones you can't put a price tag on, your health, your family. We invest in those things despite not getting a monetary return, because they matter, and they have value not easily measured. It's the intrinsic value. Being able to have a rural historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places, the official list of the nation's historic places worthy of preservation, and to be only the second of its kind in the entire state, that is intrinsic value, not just for its current residents, but for the city as a whole. Passing this would not be in the best interest of our city. Preserving the rural integrity of our area is, that would be for the greater good of
Thank you, ma'am. Nancy Veets. She marked no's.
I marked no, but, um...
Changed her mind?
My name is Nancy Veets, and I live at 1111966 Old Mill Road, and I believe all of you were given a packet of pictures before the meeting started of the flooding of our home. That was the most recent flooding, which occurred in 2019. That had been, numerous times we've been flooded, that was the worst. And from my understanding, it had much to do with mismanagement of the water flow when the development of Iron Gate happened. And I understand, everybody has to live somewhere, and, and I appreciate that. However, not at the detriment of the people who live there. We have spent our life savings trying to be able to live in the Northmont District with our children, that's where we went to high school, that's where our daughter went to high school. Those things all matter to us, and like many people have said, this has become one big family, and we've gotten to know each other even better by talking about our needs, and, and what would happen to our property should this new development come into place. We've talked a lot about the water flow mismanagement, we've talked a lot about the congestion. I'm also concerned about the school districts. I understand that when the levy wasn't passed last year, that Inglewood Elementary was closed, and so therefore we have children that are being bused into different school districts. All very fine schools, and I'm sure that will make it work, but when you're adding another 155 homes, how many more children are going to be put into our current school system? And I think that's real important. Northmont has always been known for the high academic standards that we have, and do we want to take a chance of lowering those standards in order to maintain additional revenue? Most of all, I guess, is my concern with my own property and the property of those surrounding us and the flooding issues. I don't, I don't think that the pictures even begin to show you the water flow and the sound of the water, it's like an ocean going through our property, and how frightening that is to think that you have to evacuate not only your children and your animals, but all of your furniture, and all of the work that you've done to maintain the household is now all of a sudden lost. It's a very, very scary proposition, and while I think it's important that the new developer has agreed to pay for this, how do we know that it would be unbiased? How do we know that it would be an assessment that will be in the best interests of all of us? Those are just a few of my concerns, I hadn't meant to talk, but everyone here is very, very concerned about our, our properties and our community, and I felt very strongly about sharing with you what my experience has been, and that I know what you guys do is a very hard job, and I appreciate all of you, from the work that you do here, and the work that you do to keep our community safe, and, and to better it. And I, we count on you to use your expertise to make our community better, and I wish you would just rethink the consideration of this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Veets?
Yeah.
Don Rarick?
Thank you.
Megan Bias? Alex Musgrove? Okay, that is the, that's the list. I did, I did note a couple people that...
Yeah, I'd like to get back up, Lori.
Yeah, I noted a couple people that circled back, so...
Lori King, 10763 Haber. I've told you prior that, you know, my parents moved out there 50 years ago. 50 years in September is when they moved there. There was two houses on Haber. After my parents passed away, we moved my, my children, my family out there, and we've lived out there for 15 years now. My husband has recently retired, and prior to his retirement, we thought, well, let's go, and I have not told you guys this, I'm sorry, let's go and we're going to move, we're going to downsize. We went to Huber Heights, we went over to Carriage Trails, okay, which are very similar to the sizing of the homes that are going to be potentially built over there. We went over there, we talked, we were getting ready to finalize our paperwork. We went out to, to look at our property again that we were going to buy, and I stood there, and they had it, only just a few houses were, were built, and then there was three empties, one was going to be ours, and a couple more on the other side. And I stood there, and I put my arms out, and I was like, my God, I cannot live this close. We went home, we canceled our deal, and I kissed the ground that I lived on, because it made me appreciate the rural area that we have. It made me appreciate everything that I could see, that I didn't have to touch my neighbors next door, that I didn't have to look into their windows. I could appreciate that, and it made me just so thankful... I could appreciate that, and it made me just so thankful, even though I complain about the high taxes in Montgomery County, complain and complain, because Carriage Trail is actually Miami County, so, or whatever, it's cheaper. And I complained, and I said, you know what? I'm going to live up, I'll just pay my high taxes, and I'm going to enjoy my rural community and the community that we love, and the family that I have built and allowed there. And my kids are old, they're older now, they're, they're adults. But they even say, why is this happening? Why can't we just live out here? This is what they want to move into, is the rural community. They're like, we don't want to live over there. You know, we don't want to live in the, you know, small area. So it's just, it's more heartstrings, I know that. But it's just, I just want you to, to understand how important it is that we maintain a rural community, that we don't turn into a Huber Heights. And it's just, that's all I have to say. I'm going to break down.
Thank you, ma'am. Kristy Cox. Reconsider.
Yep, you know, I was like... I just want to clarify some things. Maybe I'll shed some light on some things. Kristy Cox, 209 Kimmel Road. You know, everybody keeps on talking about studies and that studies are going to be done. And it was noted, you know, I have, I actually have the merger study that I kept from years ago, and I was very active in this merger. I was totally against it, a couple of things. It's one of those things where you never want someone to come, you never want to be able to go up to someone and say, I told you so, all right? But here we are, right? I told you so. Anyhow, the merger study, when this took place, I'll never forget it, we had town hall meetings, and I watched an official, at that time of Randolph Township, go like that with the study and say, you know, it's just a study, and it's just numbers, it means nothing. And that's, that's exactly right. A study means absolutely nothing. You're not held to it, you spend money for it, but you're not held, held to it. This council all signed a comprehensive land use plan. Every single one that's sitting up here, there are signatures on it, as well as Jack Koontz, I think, was a developer, director at the time. You know, that was done in, that was done in, what, the dates?
2018.
Yeah, 2018.
It's on what?
Yeah, 2018. It was, it was signed by everybody in 2018. And at that time, the zoning was changed to agricultural. In 1999, the future land use plan, which was a study too, all the homes on Haber, and then the land across the street was zoned as single-family upscale. Okay? So all of a sudden, from 1999 to 2018, it went from the single-family upscale to agricultural. Now we're going to take it to PDD. You know, I'm just saying, a study is just that, it's a study. It means absolutely nothing. And if this development goes through, I, I'm really concerned about who's going to be doing the study. And again, it's, it's worth only what the paper does printed on. So that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Looks like we have one more person. Ryan Farmer.
Thank you, Ryan. I have a request, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Ryan Farmer, 11735 Old Mill Road. All right. First off, real proud of my wife getting up and talking tonight. We've lost, she lost your parents, and we lost a daughter in the past four years, so sometimes I'm sitting something regarding family relationships, she has a moment where she's a little embarrassed, so. Anyway, to the matter at hand, if ordinance O-05-23-08 is approved tonight, a five-member petitioner committee already assembled will provide a letter of referendum to the law officer regarding the just-passed ordinance. Attached to the letter is a copy of the ordinance obtained yesterday. Marked as draft, yet curiously, curiously labeled at the bottom as adopted by council on July 20th, 2023. This copy is draft, and asks that the law officer attach a final copy of the ordinance to the referendum letter. The petitioner's committee will seek repeal of the ordinance and request the city provide appropriate petition forms, as well as the number of signatures the city believes are required to validate the referendum. From Section 10.02 of the city charter, the number of signatures to collect will be based on 10% of the city electors in the last governor's election. Since this will be on the ballot for the city, any registered voter in Clayton will be able to sign this referendum petition. And the intent of this committee is to provide opportunity to every city registered voter. Upon completing the collection of signatures in the next 30 days, the petitioner's committee will file the petition to repeal the ordinance with the county board of elections, at which time the ordinance will be suspended. The suspension will be resolved by one of the four options. The board of elections will determine the petition is insufficient, don't count on it. The petitioner's committee will withdraw the petition, not likely. Council will appeal the ordinance, possibly. Five days elapsed after the board of election certifies the results of the official vote on the question, likely. I find this a sad turn of events, that a rezoning and development ordinance must go to referendum because four of seven council members know better than their voters and can only offer platitudes without substance in their justification. Such actions do not inspire trust and bring into question any other decisions these members make, much less the councils as a whole. For those of us in Clayton, north of US 40, the path back to inspiring trust must include representation at the council table. A conversation between Dan York, Jeremy Blandford, and myself led to the conclusion that my background in strategic planning, budgeting, execution, and decision-making in accordance with values and nonalternatives makes me the right choice at this time to seek a seat at the council table to represent our city's heavy rural area of Ward 1. In the next week, I'll be filing my candidate petition, which already has more than enough signatures to put my name on the ballot. I've met so many Clayton citizens who join me in saying, keep it rural, and I'm humbled by the tremendous amount of support I have received already. My name is Ryan Farmer, not Elaine Herrick, and I am a candidate for Clayton City Council, Ward 1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, folks, that's all I have here on the names.
Mr. Mayor, I was, John Wallace, I was first on that list, I said maybe not at this time.
Okay. Yeah. State your name and address, yeah.
John Wallace, 11221 Putnam Road, Clayton. Part of my self-development is allow other peoples in the room to speak, maybe you're, you don't have to speak so much because those who know me know I like to talk. So I do have just a couple of things to kind of fill in some spots. I also feel that I may be, maybe one of the newest residents of Clayton, standing in here. We moved in in the fall of 2019. We were living in Missouri at the time. I'm from Arcanum, Ohio, and I had a chance to move back home. And the reason we chose Clayton or Northmont School District is we had friends that our young kids could immediately have friends in the schools. And we actually put an offer in on that house from Missouri and kind of lowballed it because it was a weird kind of layout, and lo and behold, the offer fell, everyone else's offers fell through. So I moved, all right. I drove back from Missouri over to Clayton. My wife and kids were already here. Mr. Mayor, I know you're very supportive of the Wee Bolts organization. It's very important for those kids to be there day one of practice. I stayed back to tie up loose ends. But having met the previous homeowner and having driven on Putnam Road and getting to feel of the energy and hearing the stories of the neighbors in the community, that there's no line in the middle of the road, that many neighbors will yell at cars going 35 miles an hour, which is the speed limit, but if you're going too fast, Mr. Downs, my neighbor, will most certainly holler at you. You know, we, we put in an offer $25,000 more than what we had made from a virtual tour of an open house, and we were very excited to finally be the fourth and final offer of that house that year. And speaking with one of our newer neighbors here, we've met through a local garage sale, you know, he enjoys our kids being loud and being outside. They're outside playing baseball, they're outside riding bikes. And I also fear that now with my nine-year-old and my kids riding their bikes up and down Putnam, we've given them that responsibility now that they're nine, 13, and 14, that there may be many cars bypassing other roads to then travel through Putnam. One of the things I brag about our road is that it's a dead-end road on two ends. And really, if you don't live on Putnam, or you're not visiting someone on Putnam, there's no business being on that road. And we love it out there. It's, it's, it's really quiet, we're probably the loud ones, but it's, it's good, you know, it's good to be, you know, outdoors and soaking that all up. You know, the only thing I'll say, I guess, from the side of it, is if this vote were to turn and it would be declined, I would ask whoever's assessing the value of the land that it's listed as development value, that clearly it's not meant for development, maybe it can be reassessed, and it could be lowered in price, and you could sell that property at a lower price. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, quickly. Yes.
Scott Anderson, 10581 Haber Road. Hey, I just wanted to say, council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing us to go first. That didn't happen last time, we were very upset with that. We appreciate that you allowed us to be heard today. So I just wanted to make that quick comment because that wasn't said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's it for the, for the visitors' comments. We're going to move into the old business, and the first and only order of old business is the ordinance. Is there a motion to...
I have a question first. The, the ordinance we had at the last meeting said rejecting and altering. It doesn't say that in this one.
No, because what was voted on last time was to adopt. That was the only thing that was voted on. And I think Miss Sim needs to read the title of it before you go in.
Yes.
Ordinance O-052308, an ordinance adopting the planning commission's recommendation to approve with specified conditions the application of Clayton Properties Group, Inc., doing business as Arbor Homes, for a zoning, change in zoning from Rural Conservation District 2, RCD 2, to Plan Development District, PDD, and to further approve the preliminary development plan for 42.99 acres of property located along Phillipsburg Union Road and Haber Road and bearing parcel ID number M60030060009 to be called Salem Springs within the City of Clayton, Ohio.
Is there a motion to accept as written?
I move we deny it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to deny the ordinance by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. We have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
No.
Ann Stevens?
No. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as written?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Lieberman. We have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
No.
Gorman?
No.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Lieberman?
Yes.
Ann Stevens?
Yes. And let the record show that the ordinance passed by a margin of four to three. Okay, we're going to move on with the agenda. With our new business, we have some resolutions. Will you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-072345, a resolution reappointing Earl Harlemert to the Parks Advisory Commission.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move to approve the first resolution as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
All abstained, I'm sorry. We'll roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Abstained.
And Lieberman?
Yes.
Ann Stevens?
Yes. Okay, let the record show that Mr. Harlemert was reappointed with, unanimously with one abstention. And will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R-072346, a resolution, excuse me, a resolution reappointing Robin Spiller to the Parks Advisory Commission.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, and second by Mr. Henning and Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that Ms. Spiller is reappointed to the Parks Advisory Commission. Will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-072347, a resolution reappointing Lisa Minkler to the Parks Advisory Commission.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, to approve Ms. Minkler to the Parks Advisory Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous. Will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-072348, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Northmont School District for the provision of school resource officers for the 2023-2024 school year.
Chief Hamlin?
Chief Hamlin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The staff is requesting that you authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Northmont City Schools for the 2023-2024 school year. This is our 12th contract, it's not to exceed $130,000. Any questions?
But will we have the same two officers?
One in the high school, one in the school.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve the SROs for Northmont Schools, second by, again, Mr. Henning and Ms. Kelly at the same time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that was unanimous, approved unanimously. Will you read the fifth resolution, please?
Resolution R-072349, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept proposal of and enter into an agreement with Superior Dental Care for the provision of group dental insurance benefits for the period September 1st, 2023, to August 31st, 2024.
Move for approval.
Any questions for Amanda, or...
I'll just let council know there are no changes in the premium.
Second.
The same point. Okay.
Motion to approve the fifth resolution by Mr. Bachman, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous. And we read the sixth and final resolution.
Resolution R-072350, a resolution authorizing the negotiation, execution, and delivery of governmental lease purchase agreement, number 008-0883355-301, in principal amount not to exceed $44,907.90 between City of Clayton, Ohio, and the Huntington Bank, and prescribing other details in connection therewith.
I, I do have one question on this, because I read in the, the back in the detail, I didn't see, is this for a police car, or...
No, this is for a mower for the golf course.
Ah.
Yeah. And this is budgeted for the 2023 budget. And if you'll recall, a few meetings ago, we had brought two other pieces of equipment. This was the last one we were waiting on.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous also. And we'll move to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few items for you this evening, a list of city events, and I would like to start by offering Earl Harlemert an opportunity to talk about the wine and cheese event that's going to be taking place on August 11th, because I don't have that on my list.
Earl Harlemert, 6420 Lavon Court. I am your Parks Director. I first want to talk about the Northmont Dance Party is coming up. This, this is a free event at our golf course. This is a free event at our golf course. It's provided, starts at 7:00 tomorrow, starts at 6:30 if you need liquid courage. 7:00 it starts, and it's trying to prepare you, if any of you are going to a wedding and the guy that's running the wedding wants to line dance, well, we're going to teach you how to line dance. All the new ones. Willie Williams is the director of that. He'll come right out and dance right next to you and things. And it's a great time, a lot of fun. It's only two hours, and you'll go home appreciative that you got your blood pressure up more than here. Next thing is, we have the movie in the park coming up, and that is on the golf course. It's at the Practice Green. It's open for everybody. We put up a big screen. We have bring your own lawn chairs and your food and things to sit and enjoy a nice movie about, well, you know what it is. And the popcorn is provided by the Inglewood Cinema. It's going to pop popcorn for all of you. So it's a great night to do that. We proposed a wine and cheese tasting, which is going to be held at the golf course also, and it's coming up on the 11th of the month. Starts at 7:00, ends at 9:00. It's going to be a $40 cost. That covers just exactly what it costs. There's no extra money in it. There's some members of the community has jumped up and offered extra money to buy hors d'oeuvres and things, which wasn't in the original plan. Well, we're going to have hors d'oeuvres along with it. And it's a zero event to us. It's just something we want to do to create goodwill in the community. And all these, everything where the Parks community does, it's not a big, what should I say? It's not a big money deal, because I'm not paid nothing. I've worked in the community here ever since my daughter went to high school and she became the cheerleader, not the cheerleader, but the lady that was twirling the baton up in front of the school for all the jump rates, for all them years. So I've done that, and then also jumped into when my son plays soccer, I became the head of the select soccer leagues for four more years. So I put my time in this community. I love this community, great community, great bunch of people, wherever you're at. You could be in north, southeast, or west. I went to a fireworks deal down in Springboro. And we're sitting there, and they got a young man shooting a video of it and all that kind of things. I went over and talked to him. Come to find out, he lives up in West Milton, never played a golf course. We have a fantastic golf course, a beautiful layout, it's a great facility, a lot of fun, things like that. So I started talking to him. The young lady lives south of town. And the first thing I asked him, I said, you know, I want to tell you something, north of town, north of here, we have a great community. We do a lot of things, just like this. It's free. You paid for everything down there. This is free. This is free. And you're going to get popcorn popped. So, I mean, this, it's, the Parks does a lot of things. We have breakfast with Santa Claus that you have to pay for, but there's only a certain number of tickets. And if you don't, if you think that we're going to put the tickets up for sale on a day, you better be there by, within three hours, because the tickets are gone. That's how quick they go out. We also, we're going to do the, when we have the fireworks on September 3rd, we're going to cook 750 hot dogs, give you a bag of potato chips, a glass of water, cotton candy, and everything is free. And that's why I was trying to relate to the south end of our community, Dayton. That north is a great place to live, it's a great community, and we do things that you don't have to pay for. So please, if you come, please come and enjoy yourself. We want you there. We want you to have a great time and think about what this group up here is doing, other than what they did today. I mean, I shouldn't say that, but, but you know what I'm saying is, it's a great time to come and enjoy the rest of us and everything else that's happening. So anyhow, that's basically everything. Any questions from up here or nothing? So, I just want to say, great community.
Thank you, sir. Earl, the next time, I'm going to have our clerk put you on the timer.
Just a couple other items that are going on at the golf course that the residents might be, or anyone would be interested in. Birdies and BBQ will actually take place this Sunday at 4:00 PM at Meadowbrook at Clayton. Couples will enjoy nine-hole scramble format city barbecue dinner with drinks on the patio after golf. It's $43 per person, but that includes the golf, golf cart dinner and the drink. If you can't make it to Birdies and BBQ this Sunday, there is also a couples pizza and pars at Meadowbrook at Clayton Sunday, September 10th at 4:00 PM. Couples will enjoy a nine-hole scramble format pizza dinner with drinks on the patio after golf. Again, it's $43, but that includes the cost of the golf, golf cart dinner and the drink. Just so council knows, we have been invited to participate in the Inglewood Arts Festival again. The event is on August 12th, which is a Saturday. I think the lineup time is going to be close to what it was last year, around 8:00 AM. If you were interested in doing that, if you could let me know by July 26th, so that I can get the reservation in and get the number of golf carts that we're going to need, I would appreciate that. Mr. Henning's already said that he is going to participate. So anybody else, just shoot me an email, and we can go from there. We do still have an open seat on the Parks Advisory Commission, if anybody would like to volunteer for that. It will be, I'm sorry, we advertised until June 23rd, and we didn't get anyone interested in joining the Parks Commission. So if you know anyone, or if anybody in the community wants to participate, please send in a resume. I do have a list of public service projects here that came in under our engineer's estimate. You can look at those. And then Chief Hamlin is here, and I would like him to talk about Phillipsburg Union and the stealth stat that we put out there. We heard complaints from residents that there was speeding along Phillipsburg Union, so chief was being proactive and went out and took a look.
Upon hearing the complaints, we have a new stealth stat. It's basically an undercover radar, it looks like a small box that we can place anywhere close to the road. It does, it does record times, dates, it does record speeds. We did it two separate times for five days, and we didn't get one speeder. I have all the data, if anybody wants to look at it. Yeah, it's in the back. I can supply that. I think council's been supplied with that data. It was taken over, like I said, five separate days, and in conjunction with two days, we have all the data, but we didn't get any speeders.
What was, where was the location?
Phillipsburg Union and Reinhardt.
And Reinhardt?
Yes. We were getting the, we were trying to target the dump trucks and the speeders and that they say out there, and we didn't get one. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm surprised, quite frankly, but.
And that's all I have for you this evening, unless anyone has questions for me.
Any questions or comments for our city manager? Okay, so we'll move to the council and mayor's comments. We'll start with Mr. Bachman.
Nothing to add tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Henning?
The only thing that I would suggest is that maybe Arbor Homes considers renaming the development Salem Springs to Broken Promises.
Mr. Gorman?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Merkel?
I had a whole lot of things I was going to say tonight, but I'm, time is getting the better valor of me. People think we didn't listen to what people were saying. You know, if it didn't matter, we wouldn't be sitting here in July talking about this when something that started in May. It would have been resolved a long time ago. The vote would have been had and been done, and we should be going with other issues. This was a hard item to try to come to terms with. It's not ideal, but trying to go through and rationalize, you talk about the thought process as far as analyses and trying to figure out where you go with something. Do you automatically start off and say no without having a reason why? So justify your position. You know, that's the way I approached it, was justify your position. If you're going to say no, why? Why are you saying no? Justify your position and make it good, not just because, it has to be why. And I had a hard time coming up with a specific reason to say no. Did I want to say yes? Hard reasons to come up with saying yes. But I placed my vote. And I'm going to, I brought this up to the city manager this week in a conversation I had, because I had some troubling thoughts after the last meeting and the conversations that have been had with the group that was here based on how they're expressing their feelings. And the one thing was, is that I was concerned by my personal safety from the standpoint that I, my position was viewed upon as being the opposite of what you wanted me to have. You wanted me to cast my vote based on what you wanted, not based on what I thought was possibly the right direction. I thought my physical well-being was in danger. So do I change my vote basically to satisfy the wish of the people that live on Haber Road? So I changed my vote to basically say, I'm going to say no, because I want to ensure my well-being and safety in leaving this building, because quite frankly, I have outside concerns. I'm the primary caregiver for my 94, 95-year-old dad. You know, you're talking about family connections. My dad is dependent upon me to take care of it. So if I'm not there to help him, if I'm injured in some fashion or delayed in some fashion, he's in danger, and that's not something I'm willing to do. So what did my dad tell me to do? My 94-year-old dad tell his 66-year-old son, do the right thing. Make your right decisions, stand by your decision. So that's what I did. I stood by my decision. You don't like it? Fine, you don't like it. But you know what? I heard comments from people, and I've heard a lot of bad information coming out of people from the standpoint of making misinformation. You know, misinformation does a lot in order to stir up the people's commentary. It's easy to sit back and say no. It's easy to sit back and basically make comments about other people. The family owns the property. She can sell her property to you, but she can't sell the property to someone else you don't approve of. I find it a little disheartening, the fact that you say you're a welcoming community. They're welcoming if you want them. Jeez, how welcoming is that for the city of Clayton to realize that you don't want somebody to have property that, you know, she may not want to sell the property necessarily to develop her. What choice does she have? She just, she explained her choice. You know, you want her to lowball herself as far as selling the property to satisfy your wants. Is that fair? You know, I find that a little disheartening as well. So she should take, she should take a beating on the seal of her property to satisfy your You know, I've been doing this for a bit. I got involved in the city operations a long time ago as far as the city charter, and I was, wanted to do it for the basis of what I wanted the community to be. I wanted the best. And the one thing that happened on the charter commission was there was a desire to have all council persons voted at large. No individual ward representation, everybody's going to be at large. And it was a choice decision, and Sam Cox here was on the charter commission with me, and it was a decision to have, let's have Ward One representing the Old Village area, and they can be the one sole voice for everybody north and the Old Village, and everybody else gets to vote for everybody else at large. Is that fair? No. So we ended up with a fourth, you know, basically a three, four type structure of city government. Three council persons at ward, three council persons at large. You know, my interest was ensuring that this city develops soundly, strongly, sustainable. And that's still where I stand as far as looking out for the interests of the entire community, your interests as well. And you looked at this whole big plan for this development, you know, you're dealing with, this is a preliminary plan. This is engraved in stone. This isn't going to happen tomorrow the way this is designed. It has to go through planning and development. If you read what this opening document page has as far as this preliminary plan, it has to get approved as a final draft. Now, there's a challenge as far as who's going to review those plans? You're going to hire just somebody off the street? I heard that comment being made. Or you're going to hire someone who's qualified? So what, you know, Jack, do we hire qualified people to do plan review? You know, and I heard comments made that, well, Jack's in cahoots with the developer. You know, I find it insulting, the fact that people think so low regard of our city employees. And, you know, we didn't speak up for Jack and the other persons that work here so hard and have to deal with all the things that come forth on a day-to-day basis. Jack deserves better. The city manager deserves better in terms of how people present themselves, in terms of how they treat the employees of this city. You know, they take the brunt of the work, and they deserve better respect from what you expect and what you state. If you have a problem with them, talk to the city manager. Don't be talking about people behind their back. That's a little, that's a little low. And I, quite frankly, how would you like it?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Lieberman?
So, I can repeat what Greg said, but there was a lot of that, and it was unnecessary. You will never get my vote with threats. You will never get my vote with bullying. And I'm not saying most of you did it. In fact, most of you were very respectful. You know, I sat on Dana and Alicia's porch in their rocking chair for about an hour and a half, about a week ago. And we talked about all this. And we didn't agree at the end of the day, but we talked. And I've talked to others of you. I've responded to your emails, I've responded to your texts, because I believed that that was my job. I'm your ward representative in Ward One. So I thought that was my responsibility. I know a lot of you. You know, I mean, I coached some of your kids in Pee-wee football. Dr. Barrow treated two of my boys who, you know, were knuckleheads and getting concussions at Northmont Football. And actually, at Wittenberg, he continued and probably saved my oldest son's life by telling him he had to quit playing football, which he did. So I love this community, and I love Northmont. And there should never be a doubt in any of your minds about that. What I do, I do because I believe it's right. There was a comment was made tonight, good leadership must govern with principle. I try to do that. And my principle is, I try to look at both sides. I try to figure out where we are. I try to look at as much data and statistics as possible. And at the end of the day, I analyze it and say, okay, where should I go? This was a close call for me. This is a very close call for me because of all the friends I have on the other side who now probably don't count themselves as my friends. So, you know, that's a difficult decision. And yeah, there was a lot of transparency. Not only did we advertise meetings, not only was the agenda made at all the meetings, and not only did we talk about this since May, you know, I keep track of the speakers that are speaking, and although there's a redundancy in a lot of them, but we probably have heard over 50 speakers since May, as to reasons why this shouldn't happen or should happen. And not all of you are consistent. You know, after the first meeting, I was concerned about the density, as were several other members of council. And so we said. And so we said, Jack, you know, you got to go back. We got to do something about the density issue, or you're not going to get my support. And he did go back, and they did compromise. And they did reduce density from originally 170 houses to 125. That's about a 20, over 25% reduction in the density. And then I also told all of you, and I mean it, that if I find, at the end of the day, when the final plans come in and when the real studies are done, I know some of you don't believe in studies, some of you don't believe that the census is real. But whatever you may believe, this I am telling you, these studies are what we have to rely upon. Not just anecdotal stuff, not just stories, not just speculation, but studies. And yeah, studies are worth more than the paper they're written on, because they're done by engineers who write those words on those papers. And that's who we have to study, just like I would go to Dr. Barrow if I had a medical issue. I go to an engineer if I have a water issue, if I have a street issue, because I'm not an engineer. And I rely upon those, and this is going to give us the opportunity to do that at the cost of them, of Arbor. And we're going to be able to make that determination as to whether, at the end of the day, this is indeed a good project or not. So those are the things that I look at, and those are the things that I consider. And I don't take it lightly. I mean, folks, it would have been easy for me to go the opposite way. I didn't want to see it out there. I was one of those people that told you, you know, no, I'd prefer it not be out there. But we don't get to choose where they go, because we don't own the property. Properties have to be up for sale. They have to be economical. They have to be something that the developers want to do. We don't own that. We don't own the property. So I talked to a lot of you about some of this stuff. Mr. Farmer, I talked to you. And we had a, we had a conversation on the telephone, which you recorded. And I gave you permission to do that, because I don't care. Because what I say, I mean. And I'm going to stand by my integrity. And this is the last comment I'm going to make, because I didn't know we were going to be doing campaign speeches tonight. I appreciate the fact that you have announced your candidacy. And I appreciate the fact that you told me you're not Elaine Herrick, because I know Elaine Herrick. She's a neighbor of mine. You don't look like Elaine Herrick. So I'm glad you told me that. I will tell you this. If I would have changed my vote to keep you from running against me, as I was told by a number of people could have been done, then you shouldn't vote for me, because that would have been a lack of integrity and a lack of commitment. So I took the hard road. Welcome to the campaign. I'm sure if you do win, that you're going to find this is not an easy job. And certainly, the $4,800 a year that you get paid doesn't compensate you for it. But good luck.
All right, guys, this is it for the night. I just want to, I'm not going to rehash anything anyone said. I want to say what I usually say. I want to say thanks to our staff, you know, for the hard work that they do. These folks do, these folks wear multiple hats. Everyone here wears multiple hats, and that's what makes us, makes us run. Thanks to the council. Again, this is tough. Normally, as you can see on the other resolutions that I read tonight, normally, we have a super easy job. This has been probably about the hardest thing I've done since I've been the mayor. It was a little controversial, a little contentious, but, but I do believe that as a, as a group, the residents that came in tonight, I think you were passionate about your cause. And I want to say biggest thanks to you for being respectful to us, because I think it was very respectful, considering the circumstances. I, I just want to say thanks for that. It could have, you know, you see, you see videos, YouTube and all that, of city councils that go crazy, or, you know, senate hearings that go crazy with people. And we didn't do that, and I want to say thanks for that. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to adjourn, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Thanks all for coming.